Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one, we need approval of minutes from March 6, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award contract 2307 Downtown Riverwalk Covered Walkway Roof Replacements. Good evening, Rick.
John, everybody. Parks, Recreation and Forestry received bids on March 13th for the Downtown Riverwalk Covered Walkway Roof Replacement Project. One bid was received, that from Higher Ground Roofing, for $41,900. The pre-bid estimate for the project was $48,500, and with this bid, the new revised project budget is $45,900. We recommend award of this contract to Higher Ground Roofing for $41,900.
Motion to award.
Second.
Any questions for Rick? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Rick. Item number three, award contract 2301 Laurel Drive North. Now, I believe, Max, that should read Laurel Drive South Reconstruction, Sylvan Way to Laurel Drive. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Yes, thank you for correcting this mistake. It is Laurel Drive South Reconstruction. So this item is to award the contract. The work in this contract is to replace underground utilities, sanitary sewer, water mains, storm sewer, and rebuild the road, road foundation, pavement, curb and gutter, some sidewalk repairs, and then restoration. The bids for the contract were received on Friday, March 10th, and we received five bids, which are summarized in your memo. The pre-bid estimate was 1.3 million approximately, and we've reviewed all bids, and we reviewed the qualification of Paczinski Construction, the low bidder, and based on previous work done for the city and also work done in other communities since, we find them capable of performing the work under this contract. Previously, sewer utility, water utility, and PMP funds in the budget will be used for this project, and based on all this, we recommend that the Board and Council award this contract in the amount of $1,106,152.95 to Paczinski Construction, and also allocate a contingency for a total allocation not to exceed $1,165,000 for the construction of this project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Max? Yes, Alderman, Taylor.
Max, do you have any concern with them doing both of these at the same time? Are they capable to complete both of them on our schedule?
Yes. Basically, we have talked to the contractor already, and what they're planning on doing is having, starting on one of the projects, and doing all the underground there, and then that same crew that's doing the underground, the first project, would work on the second project. Right now, we're figuring out the timing of the second project because we don't want the second crew moving to the second project while the surface crew, we'll call them, finish the first project, and then the second project is sitting there waiting for that crew. So we're going to work with them on that timing to make sure that we don't have a project open for more than one week at a time, and they can shuffle their crews out as they need to.
Yes, Alderman, Dale.
Just a procedural question. The award of contract is published, says Laurel Drive North. Is that a problem?
So that is a typo, and I have the word documented into the clerk, so we can change that before signatures to correctly feature Laurel Drive South.
Okay.
The memo did say, did call it out correctly.
Okay.
Right. The subject had north, and then the letter had south. Okay, any other questions? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, award contract 2302 Pennsylvania Avenue Reconstruction Locust Drive to Kilborn Avenue.
Thank you again. So this is a second construction contract. Will include the same type of work as Laurel Drive South with the replacement of underground utilities, reconstruction of the road, replacement of curb and gutter, and some sidewalk. We received five bids for this contract as well, and Paczinski Construction was again the low bidder. The pre-bid estimate was $1,114,660. We reviewed the bids and Paczinski qualifications for this contract, and we believe they can perform the work. Therefore, we recommend the Board and Council award contract 2302 in the amount of $926,082.20 to Paczinski Construction, and also allocate a contingency for a total allocation not to exceed $976,000.
Move to approve.
Second. Any questions for Max? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjure by call the Chair.
And good evening. I'd like to call to order the City West Bend Common Council meeting for March 20th. Note that we do have a quorum with all Alderman, President, and Counterfore. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Crosstalk).
Thank you. I'll note that we have 11 items on our agenda, the first being the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes from March 6th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any questions or corrections? Here are none, all in favor, sit up and say aye.
Aye.
We oppose. Thank you. And we have two presentations, the first one being a presentation by TDS Telecommunications Fiber Program, and we have Allen and Daniel here presenting to us. Welcome.
Thank you so much. While I'm getting set up here, Daniel's going to hand out some construction communication flyers. This is part of what we'll go over during the presentation here, but I always like to have physical copies, right? It's always nice to kind of see and feel what we're going to be going over. Let me see. Is it showing up here? It's not showing up on the screens. Little technical difficulties here, but first of all, I'm just bringing that up. Thank you so much for the members of the Council for giving me the opportunity to speak with you here. My name is Allen Roth. I'm a manager of business development with our government and regulatory affairs with TDS Telecom. The reason why I'm here is to introduce you to TDS and provide visibility into our fiber overbuild project in the city of West Bend, which when complete, will offer the community a new reliable choice for internet, TV, and phone service. Now, TDS plans to invest significant capital, hire local contractors, and staff to construct this new network, all of which will be self-funded by TDS. So to bring this tremendous project to fruition, we ask for your simple collaboration to make this happen and bring a new reliable choice to the community for the residents and constituents Over the next couple of minutes here, I'll take about eight minutes of your time. I'll leave the rest of it for any questions. What we're going to do is just basically go over high value over of who we are, the community benefits, construction, and then, of course, Q and A. So without further ado, let's jump right in. Sorry, guys, the presentation is not coming up.
Let me go and get an adapter.
Okay. Thank you. So a little bit about TDS and who we are. We started off back in 1969 as a local telephone company. Since then, we've grown quite a bit to be a Fortune 1000 company. Our portfolio of services includes wireless, wireline, IT marketing products and services through our family of companies. Although our business and service portfolio has grown since our humble beginnings, we are still very much family-owned, with the Carlson family being a majority shareholder. So we like to think of ourselves as a big, little company. For us, we're going to be focusing on our wireline portion of business, which is TDS Telecom. We're actually headquartered locally in Madison, Wisconsin. We're the seventh largest wireline provider in the nation, and we're committed to and focused on serving underserved communities throughout the U.S. We currently offer services in 34 states across the U.S., focusing majority on suburban rural communities that are currently being underserved by their current cable provider or Ilic phone provider. Sorry, there's a little map too as well. I hope you guys all have that handouts there and kind of follow along with me. So the map that you're kind of seeing there in your handout there, those light blue areas are our current active service areas. If it's black and white, it's just the shaded areas. Within that, the darker areas, those are actual active service footprints within those Now, this is what brings us to West Bend. Since our inception, we have remained committed to investing in underserved and rural suburban communities. And this is what brings me here, is based on our internal research, local focus groups, and analysis by our senior leadership, West Bend has made it to the top of our list of being a priority city based on its growth.
Here, we can plug this one in. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
If you don't mind just scrolling through this way.
That's all right. Perfect.
Just take a minute to come up. There you go.
There's always a learning curve with technology.
It's all good. We'll just stare at you awkwardly while we wait for this to come on.
Let's get back on track here. So our goal is not only to bring, to bring choice to the community, but to really future-proof it. And since we're installing a 100% fiber optic network, we really like to say we're future-proofing the city. And what I mean by that is, once it's in the ground, it can scale easily. So what's currently 2 gigs today can be 10 gig, 100 gigs tomorrow. Once it's in the ground, it's set there, it simply needs to be updated with a few electronics. With our internet service, it starts at 300 megs, so we're going to be bringing internet, phone, and TV. Our minimum speed is at 300 meg, symmetrical. Symmetrical is just a fancy way of saying the download is going to be the same as the upload. A good, easy way to think about this is everyone's used Netflix before. Netflix recommends a download speed of 3 megs. For HD, it's a 5 meg stream, so you simply divide that out, and you can see every member of the household can stream their own individual shows at the same time without any buffering or interruption. Now, the end services is the end result. To get there, it's construction. To give you an idea of what's going to happen here is, we're looking constructing around 172 miles of fiber through the West Bend area, servicing over 15,000 service addresses. We're going to be making around a just shy of $10 million capital investment, all wholly funded by TDS. We're looking to start construction here in spring, and we're looking around a 42-month timeline, so just under four years for the entire project to be completed. Now, what you're seeing there is our construction communications, right? Construction is disruptive, so over the years of doing this, we found out that communication and visibility is key to that. So what you see there is our construction communication. The first one is going to be that letter that's sent out. This focuses on who TDS is, easement, and safety. Safety is be a big key with any construction project. We want to make sure that any type of marking, flag markings, that the community is aware of what those are for, what they mean, and that TDS will be coming to town constructing this new market. Now, on all of those mailers, you'll see a big, bold 1-800 number on there. This takes us directly to our customer service triage team. This is very important because with this construction, calls and emails will come your way, right? We can't stop that. What we ask you to do is turn those calls, emails back on to TDS. We set up a system and a process to handle any issues or concerns that do come up. So if you do have any constituents that come up to you, your neighbors or friends have issues or problems, one of the first things I always ask you is, did you make sure they called in the 1-800 number to put in a ticket? And this allows us to track and resolve those issues and complaints in a timely manner. Now, you're probably thinking, I'm a consumer myself, and someone tells me a 1-800 number, the first thing I think about, how long I'm going to sit on hold? Like to pride ourselves, our hold time is less than two minutes. When you call the 1-800 number, there's two options, sales, construction. Hit construction, contacted with a live representative in less than two minutes that's locally in Madison area, they'll be able to help you answer any questions, resolve any concerns, and if needed, enter a escalation ticket for you. Now, during construction, you have that beautiful, highlighted yellow postcard, right? It's very hard to miss. As you can see, it's very large, it's very bold. We do that for a reason. We want to make sure residents know who's accountable, who we are, and what to expect for that construction process. Also during, once we get closer to construction, we'll start going door-to-door with door hangers, which is again another beautiful, highlighted yellow, very hard to miss, again, just to provide the visibility, transparency, TDS, who we are, what's going on. Each one of those communications has that 1-800 number there available. You also had a little square sign on there. This is a little yard sign, you can think of it like a little true green sign. Basically, any ground we disturb, we're going to put that in. Little messaging on there says, hey, we totally realized we messed up this soft surface, this hard surface, we're going to get this restored. If there is a problem or issue, please call us. We'll be happy to get that escalated for you, taken care of in a timely manner for you. Again, we just want to maintain that communication transparency. For those that totally skipped the mail altogether, we have a website. Residents can go there, punch in their address, they can actually get a live, dynamic map of where we are in construction process into their residence. They can also preregister for services all through that website. There's a lot of great information on there, some YouTube videos about the construction process as well. So in closing, fiber services is not all that TDS does. From coast to coast, we support a number of nonprofits, hometown nonprofits, charities, from hands-on volunteering to in-kind sort of financial support. And this is because we really take a truly vested interest in the growth and commitment to the community. It's part of who we are. We're not here to build a network and leave. We're here for the long term, to grow with the city and become one with the community and the residents here. So together with your leadership, we look forward to bringing this to fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sounds like you're open for some questions?
Yes, please.
So obviously, you have some competitors who are already here, maybe not doing quite the same thing that you're doing, but nonetheless. So as you're investing, you know, $10 million here, what's going to determine success for you here in the city of West Bend?
We have thresholds that we like to meet, that we target based on our business case when we come into a new market. From all cities that we've done, we currently have over 100 projects currently in the works across the U.S., and each one, we've hit those thresholds very easily. What it does for the city, it not only provides choice, but competition. Now, to give you an idea of what competition does, some prairie is a good business case that I like to use. We first came into the market, there was a spectrum there. They were offering a maximum speed of 60 meg internet. Soon as we came in, they gave everyone a free upgrade to 300 megs, just like that, just because of competition. After we finished that, they launched it, turned it into a 1 gig capable city, and actually dropped their prices. So it's very competitive having more than one provider there.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So I was looking at the West Bend construction estimates, and you start on the extreme east side of...
It's the northeast side of town, yep.
Northeast, then you go sort of north, and then you go northwest. The bulk of the, you know, the downtown area and so on is in DA, which would happen roughly when? Do you have any idea of what scheduled dates would be? In other words, how far out from starting on AA and BA?
Yep.
Does DA fall?
And thank you for bringing that up. My apologies, we weren't able to share that on screen and walk you through that. Those different shapes are what we call polygons. It's how we break up the construction process so we don't basically go through the entire city at once. It's how we systematically work our way through the entire city. So what we'll do is, we'll start in that AA area, we'll submit a permit for that, get that approved, we'll send out that construction communication, we'll construct that area, turn up services for residents that ordered it, and then move on to the next one. What this allows us to do is work with the utilities at their capacity so we don't overload the city with any type of infrastructure projects you have, locates, or city resources. So it allows us to really turn up or turn down our construction. Now, as far as the timeline and when we will get to those, it's just basically on the speed of construction, how smoothly that works out, that we can work on and move through the city.
I was just chatting a bit with Ian about our current ordinance process and permitting and all that. Do you mind just kind of sharing with the Council what that currently looks like and maybe some recommended changes in it for it?
Yep. So we currently have, I mean, street opening permits process in place. It's pretty standard. This isn't the first underground boring project we've had, obviously. We had several last year. There's always the, you know, long, I believe it was several miles of boring that was put in last year, up and down Main Street and such. So we have processes in place. We are looking at those a little bit just to make sure they're up to date, given the magnitude of the projects that are coming down the pipeline, both with this and with 5G and some other upgrades that are going to be coming down, just to make sure that it's not $125 to review three miles of boring. So we're going to, we're going to look at that and make sure that everything is updated with that, but otherwise, there are processes in place already for these type of permits.
Great. Thanks, Ian.
Yeah, Ian, so when there was a fair amount of boring going on, I contacted a number of the departments I thought should know something about it in the city, and got, you know, blank stares to some extent. You know, even to the extent I had a constituent that ended up with a boring machine in their yard for a substantial amount of time, because it broke down and they didn't have parts or anybody that knew how to fix it. I recognize it's a different situation, but why didn't somebody in the city know we were doing those kinds of things? I mean, we had boring that happened all down Main Street, and when I asked the question, well, who was that? You know, it was like nobody knew.
So, I mean, I guess Doug or Max can speak to the actual logistics of the permit project, you know, permit process, because it goes through Public Works and Engineering, but it could be a matter of Verizon or AT&amp;T pulling it, and it was a subcontractor doing it. I'm not sure the specifics there, but, I mean, anybody who's doing boring has to get a street opening permit.
If they open streets, correct?
Well, if they're opening within the right-of-way.
If they do it entirely in the right-of-way, do they require a street opening permit?
Yes, any excavation in the right-of-way requires a street opening permit. So the borings that you're talking about were issued a street opening permit? Which department did you talk to? The process is that...
I called Engineering, I called Public Works, I called Jay, I think I even called Parks and Rec.
Okay, and nobody could tell you who was boring there? Because we have...
I eventually went out and caught one of the guys, and I said, who do you work for? Well, I work for this company, but we're working for, and I can't remember, I think it was Verizon, maybe?
Okay.
And so I eventually did get somebody.
Oh, okay, Doug dealt with that call, so I'm going to let him speak.
Hey, Doug. Good evening. So the permit, or the work that Alderman, Allen is speaking to, is work that is done in a utility easement, so they don't go through the street opening or the right-of-way permits.
Correct.
So sometimes it's a little difficult to track those contractors down because they don't need permits to go in backyards and in utility easements. Our permitting process is just in the right-of-way or through the street. Now, sometimes those permits will go through the right-of-way and into the backyards, then it's a little easier for us to track them down. So that was the situation that you're speaking.
I mean, we eventually did track down somebody, and they took ownership of it, but it was, it was kind of painful. Took a lot of phone calls and a lot of time on hold.
I get those calls as well.
So for tonight's presentation, TDS has been very proactive. They reached out and had a staff meeting with all the respective departments involved at the city. We met at the Fair Park a month or so ago already. They requested this meeting to try to be informative to the city council, and it seems like a very different process than we might have experienced last year. So thanks to TDS for being proactive in your communications and...
We appreciate it.
Look forward to working with you.
We hear this quite a lot from cities.
Well, hopefully, we're a little easier to get through, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. Anything else you want to share with us?
That is it. Again, thank you so much. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thanks, Allen. Thanks, Dan. All right. And next up, we have a presentation for Downtown Master Plan and Action Plan by Grafe. I believe we'll start off with the introduction by our city administrator, and then we'll take it from there.
Sure. The resolution that you have before you, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. I'm excited to have Grafe here. Craig's going to present in a second and hopefully share some slides. We do have a couple of representatives from the private sector leader group as well. They're not necessarily here to present, but if there were any burning questions, I'm sure that we would press them into action. We've been, staff has been working with our private sector leaders for a few months now on this topic, and excited again to bring Grafe forward as the consultant that is being recommended to you tonight for authorization to move forward with a Downtown Master Plan.
Absolutely. Well, excited to hear from you, Craig, whether you have a presentation or not.
Yeah, I can get started. By the way, TDS knocked it out of the park with no visuals. It's really hard to follow that, but I will do my best. My name is Craig Heebner. I am an urban planner and urban designer with consulting firm Grafe. If you have not heard of Grafe before, we're a full-service planning, design, and engineering firm. We have offices located in the Midwest and also down in Florida as well. Our employee base is just under 300 employees, and we're headquartered in downtown Milwaukee, Wisconsin. If you're familiar with the old Grand Avenue Mall, that's seen the transformation there, Grafe is the top level of what the old food court was in that beautiful Grand Avenue Mall space, which is now the ground level of the Third Street Market Hall, an indoor food market hall, and Grafe has a premier top-floor office space there. Any of you are welcome to come. I'd be happy to give you a tour. We love to show off our space. We moved in in January 1st of 2020, and then COVID hit, and we weren't back in there until later that year, but we really do love that space, so. Thank you so much, Jess. So next slide, please. So you can see there, I just gave that overview of who Grafe is, if you haven't heard of us before. Again, I represent and lead our planning and urban design team at Grafe, but we have full-service engineering, as I mentioned, and other design services such as landscape, architecture, transportation, design, and the like. Next. So what I'm here to present to you tonight is a discussion that's come through fruition with discussions with Jay and Jess, and also your private sector leaders, as Jay mentioned, and it's twofold as far as what we're presenting. It's proposed for the calendar year ending at the end of this 2023. And the two things are a long-range, 20-year Downtown Master Plan, and then a strategic one-to-three-year Action Plan. So these two different deliverables will overlap. We're focused primarily again on this Downtown Master Plan, and what we want to do is build on the existing projects that you currently have, an excitement of downtown, for example, your Main Street Reconstruction, your recent Riverwalk completion. And what the discussion has been is, these are all great projects, but how do we ensure that there is a bigger vision? What is the long-term vision for downtown West Bend? And that's what we at Grafe want to help you create. So we're looking long-term, but also in the immediate future, what are gaps or opportunities for additional economic development, excitement generation, and making sure West Bend is at the forefront and the leader, leadership position for different activity in the downtown As far as our project team of who you would see here, our proposal... As far as our project team of who you would see here, our proposal includes myself acting as a project manager, my colleague Larry Witzling, who has been actively engaged in previous conversations, was part of this team too. Unfortunately, he's under the weather, but Larry has over 40 years of experience in planning and urban design and actually has past work in West Bend as well, planning and private sector development. So he's very excited about this project. And then you see a combination of different specialties within Grave, including economic development, again, landscape architects, transportation and traffic engineers, and other sustainable, resilience-focused planners and designers at Grave. Again, we have past knowledge and current knowledge of West Bend. A couple images on the right are some historic projects that Larry Witzling talked about or worked on, including the river shores and some actual past work that two of our colleagues who were previously with SEH Consulting Firm that worked on the River, Riverwalk and design plan there. So there's firsthand knowledge of West Bend and specifically the downtown area that our, that our project team is bringing to the table. Next slide. Grave prides itself on plans being from, based on community engagement. And community engagement is broadly determined at times. But what we're proposing for West Bend is a series of different activities related to engagement. And it first starts with a clear and transparent engagement plan where we would lay out all the different potential methods of engagement. And that's from community members, residents, business owners, business improvement district, your, you as elected officials, staff, all the different entities that we want at the forefront to create this engagement plan and make sure everyone is on board and adopts that plan as this is how we're going to engage the community to come up with this, with this plan. But then the practical application of that will include things like an online community survey, additionally, hard copy or online business-specific surveys for businesses located downtown. We include select one-on-one interviews with either business owners, developers, investors, brokers to understand what the market tells us, what potentially could happen in downtown West Bend. A lot of workshops and discussions with your, again, bid board, with you as a common council and other staff, and then presentations throughout the project to plan commissioning council. Next slide. At Grave, we definitely focus on long-term vision, but we pair that with immediate actionable steps. And this is where I love being a planner, working within an engineering firm because we want projects that can actually be constructed and built and see those projects come and be implemented right away. So we're very clear on action steps, costs associated with them, potential grants and funding opportunities, all that pair together with these high-level vision that come along with that. Next slide. We also love the opportunity to have West Bend stand out as a future award winner for your downtown and different projects here. On the screen, you see just a couple of examples that you're maybe have heard of before. In Oak Creek, Drexel Town Square is a new downtown. Oak Creek didn't have really a downtown at all, and Grave worked on the initial master planning and final construction and design for that Drexel Town Square master plan. And then up in City of DePere, we have a specific streetscape project shown there and as well as up in Green Bay, Wisconsin, along their river, creating beautiful public places for people to carry their gate. So again, the deliverables are twofold. On the left is kind of a high-level outline of what this 20-year downtown master plan would include. A key part of that from the community engagement is crafting vision statements and goals for what this 20-year plan should look like. But, but then again, very clear on recommendations and actions for redevelopment potential, business strategies, circulation and parking, public spaces, both existing and future, and then how to actually implement those things and move them forward. In the immediate one-to-three years, this action plan wants to focus on what are critical things that West Bend can do right now, within one-to-three years. And we've categorized those within two main areas, your Riverwalk, especially the west side. So the east side has seen a lot of improvements, but how does the west side complement that and make sure that the backsides of those businesses can work together and create a beautiful activation along that side of the river? And then Main Street has seen the streetscape improvement, which is beautiful, and we want to build on that for the entire downtown and make sure there's a plan for what all the streets in downtown can look like to have that equal, equal level of investment. Next slide. So what this will look like, again, we're proposing through the end of this calendar year, both of these plans moving forward, and I won't go through in detail here, but happy to answer any questions. We're ready to kick off if you as a council are ready to move forward as well immediately. So we're looking forward to hopefully starting this project right away in March and April and then initiating this engagement plan and beginning that engagement in the months of April and May and then starting crafting the documents, envisioning statements through the summer months and then draft plans in the fall and into winter for hopeful adoption. I flew through that a lot. I'm here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. But as the slide here says, let's get started. We're ready to work together with you and thank you for the opportunity to, to talk with you tonight.
Thank you, Craig. Thanks for being here. I'll open up to the council if there's any questions of Craig. I guess we're all just blown away. But we'll get to approving your resolution in just a little bit. Thanks so much for presenting to us. All right, and we'll move on next to the consent agenda, which consists of items three, four, and five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Muddell. Any questions on these? Hearing none. All those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Onto a gen item for consideration. We have the resolution for the downtown master plan and action plan.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Olmec and Berquist. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
You just want to go through the funding mechanism for the plan itself?
Yes, we have 100% commitment for funding 100% of the plan costs by the private sector leaders. So the, the city will engage the contract with Grave and will submit those charges once they're paid to the private sector leaders, and then they would reimburse us for them.
Yes, sir.
I can only speak for myself, but maybe everybody agrees. Our lack of questions doesn't mean we weren't interested. We are blown away and we appreciate the help from the private sector leaders. This is amazing.
It's a really generous offer to have this plan funded for us.
Yep. I'll piggyback off of that, all that too. I just wanted to say thank you. I know we got a couple in the audience. You know, $110,000 is obviously very generous. Our downtown truly is the hub of our city. We know that. We can, maybe we can make it even a little better. So, thanks so much. All right, we got a motion and second. If there's no further questions, then all those favor the resolutions, and am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Look forward to working with you. All right, and with that, we're on to number seven, ordinance to rezone approximately .14 acres located on the east side of Finalak Street and south of Barton Avenue from RS4 Single Family Residential District to B1 Community Business District by State Bank of Newburgh. Jim, we see them doing work over there.
Yep, their demolition is done. I'm just waiting for final plan approvals. Tonight, we're asking the council to consider this resolution, or I should say this ordinance to rezone approximately .14 acres of property. This is a old RS4 residential lot that was demolished and they're aggregating that whole corner up and off of Barton Avenue there to construct a new bank for Newburgh State Bank. So we're asking council to consider the ordinance to change that zoning to the commercial to facilitate this redevelopment.
Second.
Thank you, Kayler and Allen. Any questions for Jim? Hearing none. All those in favor of the rezoning, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes.
Thank you.
And onto number eight, an ordinance creating section 10.03, paragraph 11 of the municipal code regarding feeding of wildlife. And we're gonna start off. Max, you want to start this off? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So the city is covered by a DNR-issued MS4 permit. MS4 means municipal separate storm sewer system. And we've been covered since 2006. And right now, the permit is issued for every five years. So the current permit was issued in May 2019 and would expire in April of 2024. The intent of the permit is to prevent pollutants to enter stormwater that enter the, the waters of the state. And the permit is to, for the city to be able to discharge into the water of the state. So there are different requirements with every cycle of permit. And in this current cycle, one of the requirement is to adopt local ordinances to address potential sources of bacteria that could enter the MS4. And our current code covers some of those, but it does not prohibit the intentional feeding of wildlife within the city limits. And this is why staff recommends that the council adopt the attached ordinance and that would regulate the feeding of wildlife within the city. I did get a couple of calls earlier asking questions about what, I guess, where the requirement came from, and I explained it came from the permit. And I wanted to add that we do send the DNR an annual report every year on March 31. And the question was asked, what if this is not adopted tonight? We would have to enter in the report that there are, there are at least this one item that we would not meet. And so DNR would probably flag that and then come back to us and ask why not? And, and then they might then, you know, work with us on how, how come you didn't meet it? What can you do to meet it, et cetera, et cetera? So I just wanted to bring that up because a couple of questions were, were asked of me today about, about that specifically. So, and then, so our staff would recommend adopting the ordinance, but if you have questions and want to have a discussion about it, we can do that.
Thanks so much, Max. I'll ask for a motion on the floor first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Muddell. Then I'll open up for a discussion. John?
Yeah, just, I just like to add to it, for those people that do have bird feeders out there, that is an exception in this ordinance, correct, Max?
Yes, that is correct. Bird feeders are not covered by that restriction.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Yes, Brett.
Max, if we decide not to act on this tonight, or if someone would happen to ask for an extension or to postpone this for another meeting, are there any monetary ramifications from the state for not meeting the deadline?
Most likely, there would be, probably. Obviously, the permit is for the, the city to discharge their stormwater into the waters of the state. There is not really a mechanism for plugging up all our outfalls to the Milwaukee River or, or the creeks going there. So my belief is that there would probably be some kind of fine coming from the DNR for not meeting this requirement. I don't know how much. I don't know the entire process, but that's my guess, yes.
I noticed there have been several, I guess, deadlines, that March 31st is just one for this portion as far as the permit goes. Do you know any other entity or community that has had issues with their permits that have asked for either an extension or any other means to, again, for, just to allow open, open review of the, of the permit? I mean, this isn't something that the council usually does on a, on a basis, but it's come to our attention. So I'd like to see a, you know, an in-depth look at it, at least postponing for a meeting or two.
Okay. I have, not off the top of my head, I, I can't think of any community that I talked to that would have to postpone their deadline. Within our permit, some requirements are very hard to meet. We have worked with DNR to maybe kind of modify the requirement. If we have to cover something that is more quantifiable, then, I'm just gonna use fake numbers, but if they say you have to meet this 40% goal by this date, then if we do some math and realize we can only get to 25, usually we're able to work out an agreement with them. But that comes with a schedule with, okay, you do 25 by this first deadline that we gave you. But then three months later, you have to be at 30, 35, and then they work out a schedule. But that's more for quantifiable goals, I would say.
And do you know of any requirement for bacterial monitoring of the Milwaukee River basin? The printout I show from the report only, only references the total suspended solids and total phosphates. Doesn't mention anything about bacteria.
So that printout that you have from our permit?
Correct, page 57.
So there are some items in the permit that are not really in a model that we can quantify. And the way this works is that you're supposed to take certain actions towards that goal, even though, for example, the bacteria impact. Let's say the feeding of wildlife is not permitted anymore. So that means less wildlife will come into the city and therefore less bacteria contamination. But we, we don't know today if we have a number 25. I'm just using random numbers to help me with the math, but we have a ratio of 25 and eliminating that wildlife would drop the ratio to 23 or 12 or 5. We don't have means of quantifying this. So we're taking those steps. We know it's going to be, to have a positive impact. We just don't know yet how much. And this been the little bit of the story on the MS4 is that some things that we're not, that we're not able to be quantified. However, DNR has these programs that they develop. And then they have areas where they actually test and they can measure. And then after that, they create a model that everybody can use in saying, if you have this type of situation and you're doing this type of action, then you can say that you reduced by so many percent. As far as I know, that doesn't really exist for bacteria yet.
And do you understand that the feeding of wildlife is just one, one of these readings that, that the city is supposed to meet, that there is a list of others? So the requirement is what, three of those elements?
Yes, so there are other items, like I mentioned before. Pet, pet waste management is one of them. That's already covered in our code. The awareness to eliminate cross-connects between sanitary sewer and storm sewer is another one. That, that's just for the bacteria. There are other items that we do, we do, we do inspection of our outfalls. And that's regulated also in the permit where we have to take samples from those outfalls after a 48 period of no rain. And the reason we do that is because if there was no rain, there should not be discharge in those pipes. But if we do find discharge, then we know it's coming from somebody else that, or somewhere else that could be potential contamination, potential pollution. And so we have to analyze those with chemicals. And so, yes, there are several different steps and, and items on the, the list of, of requirements.
Okay, and to the best of your recollection, you anticipate a monetary fine to the city if we fail to meet this March 31st deadline?
That's a possibility, yes.
Okay.
All right, I saw Alderman, Kayler first.
I guess, it seems kind of silly to me. What exactly, what wildlife are they trying to prohibit here from? Who's feeding? What are we feeding? Who's feeding, what are we feeding that we shouldn't be feeding?
Well, there's not really a, a list, but I'm going to guess here, deer, squirrel, chipmunks, I, I don't know.
It seems like a little bit of DNR overreach, but...
Well, we've also had, I mean, issues brought before, the council before, of people feeding waterfall in the rivers and such, which, you know, again, we didn't address at the time, but was there, I'll also note that in drafting this, it's specifically not aimed at only intentional feeding of wildlife, because you can have situations where, you know, it's not that I'm deliberately putting food out, but by putting something in my compost pile right next to a waterway, I now have animals congregating right in an area that would flow directly into Milwaukee River. So, you know, there's, there's a variety of things that this is aimed at, it's not just, you know, I'm putting food out for animals, or I'm sitting on the, you know, new riverwalk throwing bread for the ducks, you know, it's not just that, it's, it's a lot of factors out there that can cause contamination.
I will add also that in a conversation with Public Works, there was a complaint that came at some point from, from geese excrement on, on the sidewalk, and because people were feeding the geese, and I guess they talked to their friends, invited their friends, they came en masse, and then they created this problem for the city of their excrement on the sidewalk, and, and that came from somebody feeding them in that location. So that's something that we've dealt with in the past as well.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but you can have a couple hundred geese in Regner Park, no matter what you do, there's geese all over this city that nobody feeds, that this just seems pretty trivial.
And despite the ongoing deer abatement program that we participate in every year, we still have deer walking through the middle of town. And so if, I'll just leave it at that.
I, I'm not denying that there's a problem there that may exist outside of people feeding the animals. The point here is that having this ordinance would maybe prevent to aggravate the problem and make it worse. And so if the, the animals are coming anyway without having feed given to them, that's, that's one thing, but why add to the problem by feeding and inviting more of their friends?
Alderman Allen, I saw your hand up before.
Yeah, and don't forget Alderman Dolnick, who actually had his hand up ahead of me. I, I actually had a question regarding feeding birds, there are certain birds, apparently, certain wild birds, that, they don't look for food in a feeder, they look for food on the ground, they won't feed from a feeder. And I, I guess, you know, people that like to watch birds, like to feed birds to get them there to watch them, and so the question would be, that would now be illegal under the terms of this ordinance? Or if they put the food on a cookie sheet that's on the ground, it's, the top of the cookie sheet is obviously above the ground, is that, would that then be illegal?
I'm going to let the attorney talk about legality.
So the, the intent of the above the ground is because if you're placing the feeder on the ground, it's now inviting wildlife to come, you know, it, it's just asking for a problem there. I, I don't think there's any, any magic number for that, I did specifically take out the, like, the example that had been given to engineering of a, of another municipality had a five-foot limit, and it's like, I mean, how many people have bird feeders on those little shepherd hooks, and that's what, three, four feet off the ground? Again...
We've, we've got ours like eight and nine feet above the ground.
Oh, yeah.
And, and trust me, we, we are not keeping the chipmunks from getting fed from those feeders.
Right.
We're not keeping the squirrels from getting fed from those feeders. I've actually found a possum feeding on one of these above the ground feeders, I mean...
And again, the, the intent of this is not to say we're not feeding songbirds, the intent of this is to, you know, stop situations where you have exactly what was brought up with, everybody showed up and fed the geese in an area, and now you have the, you know, goose poop everywhere, and it washes right into the dan, into the mill pond, you know, I, I mean, that, into the, like, that's a, that's a huge problem. And you don't want that, you know? So this isn't, you know, nobody's going to be running around with a tape measure saying, oh, your bird feeder isn't five feet off the ground, I'm going to give you your ticket. I mean, the only, the only way we're enforcing this is if there's a problem. The city can't wander through your backyard and inspect your bird feeders.
So the, the chief is sitting back there. Who, who enforces this? Is this now, we're going to have a, a police officer?
No.
Or a CSO go out and give tickets for...
It's going to be like any other public nuisance type issue, I mean, this is in the nuisance code, and we have all sorts of things in the nuisance code that it's largely complaint-driven, because, again, this is not something that city, city staff isn't going through your backyard to try and find places where you have breeding grounds for mosquitoes, but if somebody files a complaint because their neighbor has a kiddie pool that's been in the backyard full of water for the past five years, then yeah, the city might, you know, do an inspection and, you know, take care of it. So this is, this is going to be largely complaint-driven or observation that, hey, there's a huge amount of runoff coming from one area.
And one last quick question. Max, if you had 48 hours with no rain and you went out and did it, 48 hours with no rain, and you have the West Bend dance team or whatever doing a, a, a car wash, isn't that car wash water going to get into the storm sewers and wash out to the river? Do you then have to track down, oh, we had high phosphates because...
Yes, basically, when we see the, the discharge in the pipe, we trace it back to, so we go to the next manhole to see, because that next manhole could have like three pipes coming, and then so we see which pipe it's coming out of, and then we follow, we follow up and up, and I want to say this about enforcement or whatever, the, the cases that I've worked on with illicit discharge mostly, I don't show up with a stick, I, I show up and say, hey, there is a problem, we need to correct it, how can we do that? So, and then people comply, like, oh, sorry, I didn't know, I'm not supposed to do that, and they understand, it's the law, so they're, then they'll comply, and I send a report to the DNR saying, I talked to them, they corrected it, this is what they did, take some pictures, send them the report. So we're not out here like trying to catch people and, you know, tickets, we're just, you know, there are some laws trying to be, make it better for the environment and all that, and then we, we, we inform people when, when we find problems.
Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll give you another good example. One of the public nuisances that's in there is garbage cans or dumpsters, garbage receptacles which are not fly-tight. Nobody's going around and saying, you have a lot of trash in your dump, in your can today, you know, this week because you cleaned out your attic, and the flap isn't down, so here's your ticket for not having the flap down on your, on your garbage cart. I mean, again, this is, public nuisance issues are larger issues from an enforcement standpoint that aren't taken care of by a knock on the door saying, hey, can you dump out that kiddie pool that's been sitting there with water for six months?
Well, I'm glad to know my garbage is in violation every week. I'm going to, I'm going to go over to Alderman Dolnick, he's been waiting patiently.
This just seems silly to me, I don't know who's dumb enough to start putting food on the ground in their backyard for animals, but if they do, I mean, raccoons don't go to a meeting and say, hey, there's that house that, and they've got food in the backyard, you're feeding, you're feeding wildlife that's already there, and so I don't know how doing this reduces the defecation by wildlife. So I think this is really, if you want to do it for public property, I can see that, the example given by Ian about feeding the geese, or that you spoke about by the riverwalk, but I don't know that this is... On another matter, do we allow livestock in the city? Do we have...
Yes, chickens, licensed chickens are allowed in the city.
Oh, I forgot about the chickens.
And miniature pigs, don't forget those.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Alderman Zingzai, do you have a comment? Okay, and I think I'm going back to Alderman Berquist.
Just two quick points, okay, not, and I know this has gotten away from us, okay, and I know this is something you didn't want to discuss tonight, but the DNR actually puts out a pamphlet that talks about what you can do to help, okay, and it talks about learn more about stormwater runoff. And if that's, that's the purpose of ordinances, again, education rather than enforcement, we're not out to write tickets, I get that, but there are so many other things that we can be doing, rather than going after grandma who's putting corn out on your yard.
We won't go after her, only if you complain.
Again, this pamphlet talks about leaves in the roadways, fertilizer, pesticides, those I, I believe are more important of a topic to be discussing rather than corn in the backyard. And two is, I guess just for future reference, if we know that there's deadlines that take, that require council action, that you give us some more time, some more leeway so that we can research that, because, you know, sometimes we do look into these things, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on that note, I am going to call for a vote, it's, council's right, if you want to vote it down, then we can always bring another alternative back up to us, so. We do have a motion second, and if you don't mind, why don't we make this roll call vote just to be sure. Liz Bitt, please. I'm sorry.
So, the other thing I will note, because this has come up in the past, the, it is not a, it is not a regular occurrence here, but the, the way the ordinances read, if it's non-unanimous, it is supposed to come back for a second reading, however, you can, even if it's not a unanimous vote, you can waive the second reading and adopt it even without that, you can waive the second reading if it turns into a non-unanimous vote. So given the timeline, I would throw that out there as a secondary motion depending on the outcome of the vote.
Would we need to make that prior to the initial vote, the waiving the second reading?
I, I think it's debatable whether you waive the second reading, you could, you could make the motion to waive any requirement for a second meeting prior to holding the vote on the actual ordinance.
Who made the motion?
I have Butchlick and then Model.
I'd, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to waive the second reading, if you would accept.
Yes, I will accept.
The second was...
Justice, you're okay with that?
Model?
Yeah, you guys got a cramp, sorry.
All right. All right, Liz Bitt, if you can do a roll call.
Alderman Butchlick?
I know.
Hi.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
I abstain.
Alderman Kaler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Aaron?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Zingzai?
Aye.
All right, well, that went better than I thought, okay? Then that passes. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us put you through the ringer. All right, and after all that exciting, exciting talk...
I know.
We will move on to reports, the first of which is a report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board.
I have to put my thing on. Okay, we, we had our March 2023 bid board meeting on Tuesday, March 7th, here in the council chambers at 8:15. There is a replay available if you so desire. We approved the meeting minutes and the financial report, we reviewed the bid board bylaws and the municipal code section 151, and asked the attorney, Ian Proust, present, or make a draft to update the code for bid board appointments to take place in April of each calendar year instead of prior to the end of the year, which moved it into November or December timeframe. We also are updating the, the language of the bid board bylaws and municipal code to allow for a change to the membership criteria from everybody must be a member or an occupier to the majority must be a member or occupier. This would open us up to bring someone in to the bid board that might add value to the bid board, but not necessarily meet the criteria of owning or occupying a business within the bid. And then good news for the council, we approved a transfer of $252,745 from our fund balance to support upgrades to sidewalks, streetlights, a new sound system, and other amenities for the Main Street reconstruction project. There are two pre-construction meetings planned for downtown property owners, businesses and residents. These are Tuesday, March 5th, March 21st, 5:00 to 6:00 PM, in the police classroom, and Wednesday at 8:30 to 9:30 AM, also in the police classroom. We reviewed and approved the marketing, the bid marketing committee plan for summer 2023. This is a plan to help businesses thrive during the opportunities presented by the construction downtown. We created a new committee that's tasked to research employee parking needs throughout the bid. Members of the committee are Tony Jason, myself, and Peggy Fisher. And the Bid Facade Grant Committee reported out the, the awarding of two, two facade grants for improvements to the, the rear facades of, and I'm probably going to get these wrong, it's Sal's Pizza and April, April Rose's, or Beth Rose's property that's immediately adjacent. They're treating it as a big project, they have the same project planner, contractor, and so on, so it's going to be a, I think, a pretty exciting project, really improve the, what are arguably the remaining worst examples on the backside of downtown. And then our meeting in April will be April 4th, which I'll remind everybody is election day, therefore, we are meeting in the school, school district office at 735 South Main at 8:15 AM. Any questions?
Sounds great. Well, first off, thank you to the bid for adding dollars to the Main Street project, that's awesome. I have a question on the ordinance, so is the plan to have all of that amended in time for mayoral appointments in, in April? Ian or Mark?
That'll be on Ian.
Be the next cycle.
And the council.
Okay.
Specifically, specifically discussed that it would not be cutting somebody short, we would just extend somebody the additional five months.
That's why I was asking, Jeff. Okay, great, awesome. Any other questions from Alderman Allen?
It's also worth mentioning, not really a question, but I was having a drink with one of the business owners downtown before the meeting tonight, and they're very pleased with the communication from the bid or whoever handling that, that next meeting that you're talking about.
Yeah.
For the downtown businesses, they're, they're pleased with the communication, they like how it's going so far, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely, that's gonna be key throughout. All right, next, or finally, is a report by Alderman Model regarding the planning commission.
Okay, assuming I don't get another leg cramp, um, we did have a planning commission meeting on March 7th, and we discussed, um, in pretty good detail, the uh, uh, the, the Newburgh State Bank that we just took action on tonight, um, had a public hearing, uh, survey, certified survey map, uh, site plan, so on and so forth, um, all approved, and obviously, we set, we set that forward tonight, like I said, um, also a Chrysler dealership, um, site plan for that, and uh, discussed the, um, adding a driveway, um, by the car wash that's going in over by, um, uh, I always forget the name of the chicken place.
Pizza Ranch.
Pizza Ranch, yeah, thank you.
You know, the, the chicken place.
Over by Pizza Ranch, yeah, the pizza place, sorry, I'll eat the chicken there. Mr. Killian was there, and we did have a kind of a lively discussion about that, um, and with a, a potential grand opening, a grand opening coming forward soon, we may wind up with a special meeting to, um, make some adjustments to that, or possibly talk about a different solution, so, um, and I am not remembering what this last one was about right now. It was a discussion and recommendation to set a public hearing for a change in the recommended land use from industrial to government and institutional, in the 2020 comprehensive plan for the city West Bend for lands located at 102 West Aquora Road, where?
That's that small property that has real, no other use, so you might as well change its zoning.
Okay.
Yeah. It wasn't much discussion or anything, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Gone. Anyways, that's it.
Anything else? All right, that'll open up for anything for the good order? Yes, sir?
I'd like to remind everybody that early voting starts tomorrow morning at 8:30, 8:00 AM, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM, starts tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM and runs through Friday, April, or no, March 31st, at 5:00 PM?
You got it, the clerk's office is ready for ya. Anything else? And having no for the business for the common council, adjourn by the call to chair, have a good night.